6:710 AM, consideration of project plan for the South Lake algae bloom abatement in the Clear Lake and Clear Lake Oaks area and submit project plan for funding to ARPA Committee for their consideration and/or to consider using local assistance and tribal consistency fund and/or to submit as a potential project to Congressman Thompson for the annual congressional community project funding. Supervisor Sabatier and Crandall.
So I'm joining Zoom. If it's possible for somebody to allow me to be a panelist so I can share my screen. Thank you very much, whoever that was. All right. So thank you very much. Going to present to you things that you are probably well aware of, but want to present to you today also a potential solution. As you know, our lake being a massively old and natural lake does have some issues that comes along with it, and one of those issues is the algae that we collect. And most of that algae is collected based on the wind, based on the natural flows into the South Lake area, most specifically into the Clear Lake Oaks and Clear Lake Arms. And so during the summertime at one point or another, and it really, it's hard to say the rhyme and reason, sometimes the lake can be full and we start seeing these algae blooms. Sometimes it's during drought that we see these algae blooms. But overall, by the end of summer, the algae is there, very obvious, has a nauseous scent to it, and it continues to burden both our economy and our health. It does have many health issue components that comes along with it. South Lake areas are heavily impacted again due to the prevailing winds and natural flows. And I thought it just right to show a picture of my predecessor walking through the algae, trying to do something about the algae. In the past, in the city of Clear Lake, sometimes you would see Jeff Smith on the airboat trying to break down the algae. It has come to our understanding that that is not a solution. I know some people keep asking for that. It is not a solution. In fact, it kind of exacerbates the potential health issues that come along with that by aerating the algae. So we did some research. We found some old things that we've tried before, like we saw the solar bee that's been tried in the past. Unfortunately, I have a picture of one of the only solar bees that we had in the past surrounded by massive algae buildup. And part of the problem is that we never really get enough of this equipment to be able to make a difference. One, in a massive lake such as Clear Lake, does not make a difference. However, there is a new technology, Algy Sonic MPC buoy, that uses sonar waves to break down the algae prior to it rising to the surface. When it rises to the surface, that's when it starts to get that mat and the pads that we see from the algae on the surface. This breaks it down so that it can come back down. As you can see, these are the sonar equipment underneath the buoy. It is run by solar. It has, and I'm sure I'll be corrected because I believe we have people from Algy Sonic here today. It runs on solar, and I believe it has a potential of a 15-year lifespan due to the equipment that's on there. And it is anchored to the lake bed. It also has the ability to collect water quality data and submit it wirelessly. I know in speaking to Water Resources Department, there is excitement about that because right now, we go through Big Valley Rancheria, who does the collection of the data, and I believe it's once every two weeks, I'm kind of looking at Director Deleon, but I believe it's once every two weeks that they do the data collection over at Big Valley. This would allow for daily data to better understand what weather conditions, what water conditions create the algae conditions that we end up seeing, to better understand and better work with our lake to have better outcomes. Also, the equipment does come with water safety measures. There is a light for the nighttime, and as you saw in the picture here, there's a little floating device next to it as well, though pretty obvious during the day. So just a quick sample off their website of what happens. You have the sonar treatment under the water that stops the algae from rising to the top. Without the Algy Sonic treatment, the algae would just rise all the way to the top, which again creates the nauseous odors, smells, and has a burden on the local economy and the local recreation in those regions. So in working with Algy Sonic, we've received a proposal. This is a map of the South Lake area and the Clear Lake Arm. As you can see, it goes from the Maniki Beach all the way down to almost to Anderson Marsh State Park, goes on to the Point Lake View area as well, surrounding that peninsula. And these are, I believe it's 18, I believe it's 18 units in that picture. Then this is the Clear Lake Oaks Arm. Again, I believe it's also, maybe it's 14 each, yeah, 14 each. So it's 14 units on the Clear Lake Arm area. And again, we've all experienced this. We all see the algae. We all understand the nuisance and the burden that it creates on those who live there, those who want to play there, as well as, again, potential health issues. So we're looking at 14 units in Clear Lake, 14 units in Clear Lake Oaks. The total estimated cost, based on the estimate we received from Algy Sonic, is $1.5 million. The Blue Ribbon Committee did have a conversation about this sonar system. It was approved. However, the Blue Ribbon Committee has not funded this operation. They are looking at the entire lake. So the idea is not only to help the areas that we know that are impacted by algae, but possibly also motivate the Blue Ribbon Committee in saying, hey, we're doing this locally to support this project. You guys get the rest. Right now, we're not seeing that movement as the funding has not been made available. There is a potential extra added cost if we do the data gathering. That would cost approximately, based on the numbers I received, $35,000 per year, and that's both for the Clear Lake area and Clear Lake Oaks area. And so that is the overall presentation that I have. I don't know if Supervisor Crandall wants to add to that. I appreciate working with both Water Resources and Supervisor Crandall to figure out what are our best options. Last year in our drought, we were scared that we would have the same situation and have the situation of such a high density of algae. One more time, we're lucky we have a lot of water, but we don't want to stop and not take action. We want to be prepared for the next one.
Thank you. This topic came up, I want to say, last year or the year before, in regards to the hypo limnetic oxygenation project that UC Davis was basically promoting to do in the Oaks area. And a lot of the Water Resources Department and many others felt that that was not only a short-term fix, and it was an expensive fix that would be funded by the Blue Ribbon funding or Prop 68 funding. This would be more of an ideal situation or project to deal with the algae. And so I think with this, it gives us the opportunity to concentrate on the most affected areas. Every time there is a project discussed in Blue Ribbon, these two areas, Clear Lake Oaks and Clear Lake, are highlighted pretty often in regards to algae. One of the other things I'd like to highlight too is that we as a county and Blue Ribbon will consistently make concessions and projects and support projects for economic development. However, algae consistently denigrates our drinking water capability and public health aspect. So I think this is, I think this project could help with that, and I know that I like the effect of three different options. So in case there isn't support for one, we can constantly look at others to implement this type of initiative. So I don't know if that helps.
No, I appreciate the extra information there. Again, what we're looking for from the board today is approval to keep moving forward, seeking funding. There is potential that ARPA funds are being clawed back due to the timeline of having to spend it by December 31st, 2024. So that's an opportunity. We did receive $3 million for the LATCF. Let me know if you want me to tell you what that acronym is. I don't have it off the top of my head right now. And there are other opportunities out there as well, just to make sure that we can make this happen. We do have EJ and Greg from Algy Sonic, and also I do want to highlight William Fox from Water Resources, who has been a strong proponent of the system, and just opening it up for anybody from Water Resources that wanted to speak on this item, as well as from Algy Sonic.
Hello, Board. My name is William Fox. I'm a Water Resources Program Coordinator, and I'd just like to speak briefly on this system. Like the board said, we've been interested in this technology for over a year now. It was actually highlighted in the 2017 Clear Lake Sanitary Survey that was done in regards to drinking water impacts, and it did identify this technology as a potential solution to the drinking water impacts. And I know I've been reaching out to some of the water purveyors as well. And this technology really does have the ability to even lower our drinking water costs. We pay some of the highest drinking water rates in the county, and this reduces the amount of chemical treatment that the purveyors need to do, and it reduces the cost for them to actually be treating this water. So these technologies do have the ability to have a payback period even for water purveyors as little as two years. So I do think this is a really good investment, an investment that will pay dividends in drinking water and recreation and water quality benefits to our listed species as well. So I wanted to just give that brief roundabout and then pass it over to EJ or Greg if you guys can talk a little bit about more the data collection and how that kind of informs the ultrasound treatments.
And please correct anything I may have said incorrectly, especially the 15 years.
No, that is correct. 15 years, and then one buoy can treat about a 50-acre radius. And like you said, they will be lighted. They've had no problems with vandalism or with heavy wave action. They've been over in the East Coast during hurricane season, so they're very, very strong and durable, and they've been tested in some pretty intense environments. And one of the coolest things that I really like about it, and you touched on it, is that data dashboard. So the reason that this technology is really effective is because it collects constant water quality data. I'm pretty sure it's on a 15-minute interval, and that water quality of data informs the ultrasonic treatments. So because we have different genera of cyanobacteria, and it changes each year, we can't just use one type of ultrasound. So this buoy actually collects this data, then informs the ultrasound treatment, and then it can even forecast what type of harmful algal blooms we'll experience in the future. So it's a really, really cool technology and has really great additional benefits, not just reducing harmful algal blooms.
Are there, with this technology, is there just one company that's doing this? Are there competitors? Is this something that we have to?
There's lots of different types of technology available. This has been kind of the forefront of ultrasonic treatments, so it's the most well-regarded, I would say. There's a couple other competitors in regards to ultrasonic treatments, but there are lots of other technologies, like Supervisor Sabatier touched on, like the hypo limnetic oxygenation. There is an ACOM technology, which is basically like taking Clear Lake water and then treating it and putting it back in the lake. So there's different technologies for harmful algal bloom abatement, but this one, we're supportive of it basically because of the maintenance costs, because of the long-term operating costs, and the flexibility that we do have to expand this project and complement it with additional buoys if we receive more funding.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yeah, I forgot to mention that, you know, I know that there's, well, we all know that there's a couple of long-term plans to help with some of the nutrient load and sediment that is affecting the algal blooms or, you know, enhancing the algal blooms. Of course, those are long-term. So in the meantime, while we're working on those to move faster, I think it's imperative that, you know, we look at projects as such. I know that with hypo limnetic oxygenation, a lot of statements were made, and in some instances, I was in agreement with the fact that that treats now, but there is a lot of other, a lot of other impacts from further up in the hills and where the nutrient comes from. I think those will be worked on as well, but in the meantime, some of these short-term options or options like the sonar would really help, you know, until we can get some of these other large projects intact.
So do you envision starting in these two arms, and then if it's successful, moving it lake-wide, or is it just going to be this project, these two project areas?
At this moment in time, we're looking at just those two project areas. I know the Blue Ribbon is looking at lake-wide. Hopefully, this could be a partnership with Blue Ribbon where we're doing our part and then kind of pushing them to do their part, which right now, again, they do not have the funding. And part of the reason that I pulled the aquatic weeds is this year it was 225,000. Typically, it's around 200,000, and we've been doing it since 2011. So we've spent about 2-point-something million dollars over the course of the last 10-plus years. Here, this is 1.5, and it lasts 15 years, and the maintenance and everything else is minimal in comparison. And so to me, it's somewhat of a comparable, and it's also, the aquatic weeds is more focused towards the North Lake area. Well, obviously, the algae is more focused on the South Lake, but we are seeing algae in other areas. I know Lucerne Harbor is seeing algae and things like that. So that's why supporting the Blue Ribbon Committee and keep doing what they were planning to do, but at least not waiting for others to solve our problems and making an attempt to solve the problem ourselves and seeing what funding is available.
I didn't even get to ask the Algy Sonic, though, if there was a capability after, you know, like you mentioned, would we be able to move some of these buoys to other areas? So that way, once we figure out which areas are also impacting, let's say that everything's basically just, you know, prolifically going to those areas, but there's another spot that can strategically, you know, be treated so that that way it doesn't collaborate in that end of, the end of the lake, would we be able to move it to strategize, you know, some of the load and some of the algae? So I didn't know if Algy Sonic, the representatives could answer that for us.
Yeah, thank you, Board members. So if we see that water quality trends are down, you know, in a positive way and are staying positive, then we can certainly, you know, look at moving them. We are working on a new way to, you know, deploy the anchor systems, so they might be recoverable, but they would require a new anchor system if we were ever to move them to a new location. So that's the only constraint that there would be.
And if you can give us your name, please.
EJ Neefci, Algy Sonic.
Thank you. And can you provide us some information on the data collection and just provide a summary of how that works?
Yeah, absolutely. So we have our standard six, and those are phycocyanin, which is associated with cyanobacteria. We have chlorophyll A, which is associated with green algae or chlorophylla. We have turbidity, which is associated with just, you know, the algal load that's in the water column. And we also track dissolved oxygen, so that's important for understanding, you know, how much oxygen is in the system, and especially with some of the aerobic species. We have temperature, and above, you know, 25C, 77 Fahrenheit, we're going to be seeing, you know, more risk of algal blooms. So that's another thing that we look at. And also pH. So if we see the pH going up, that's an indicator that photosynthetic activity is also increased. So that's another thing that we track. So that gets reported every 15 to 30 minutes back to our server, and that's what drives our predictive analytics suite that we use to inform our program changes, both automated and also in concert with our dedicated program, project management team that looks at water quality trends every day on the project for the project's duration. So it's not a set-it-and-forget-it system. We're in for the long haul.
So I have a question. Was the Sota Bay area considered?
We saw that as a hotspot, but in terms of this project, it wasn't.
We were looking at a, we were looking at a project area and trying to also contain the cost.
Right.
Because it's about $50,000 per unit, and just, once we can show how it works, then it's easy to say, yes, let's expand it, rather than trying to deploy in such a large area because our lake is.
Yeah.
But is it in the Blue Ribbon Committee proposal areas? I can't, off the top of my head, I can't remember if one of the spots was the spot you're talking about, or do you know off the top of your head, Mr. Neely?
Is Sota Bay, is that located further down, down to the western part of the lake?
No, it's, it's a.
I can also speak to that. Essentially, when we did like our first investigation, LG identified, they used like remote sensing data to identify like certain hotspots around the lake. Sota Bay was one, North Lakeport was one, and then both the Oaks and Lower Arm were other hotspot areas. And the reason that those two areas were selected in the Blue Ribbon proposal was the, Lower Arm was just the density of population as well as water purveyors. So we wanted to maximize the benefit, and so we saw there's three large water purveyors in that Lower Arm that provide a really large service area, as well as a huge population. So it was really just trying to maximize the benefits of the technology.
Okay. Supervisor Green.
Thank you. I'm going to have several questions. We do not intend to be oppositional, but more like tough love. I'm supportive of this, but I'm also supportive of about 15 other projects I saw through the Blue Ribbon Committee process, some of which were also pitched by Water Resources. So my first question is, is this item being brought forward as a potential funding mechanism for the Algy Sonic project that was approved by Blue Ribbon Committee? This looks like a bigger project with more buoys. So is this being pitched to us as a county, or are you trying to bring the Blue Ribbon approved project for consideration of funding support?
So I am not on the Blue Ribbon Committee, so this is not a Blue Ribbon project. This is with conversations with Water Resources and with Supervisor Crandall. We did not speak about Blue Ribbon Committee due to the Brown Act, but we did speak about the areas that needed the project to be covered.
Thank you. And for Algy Sonic, or anyone else, this is a larger project with a larger number of buoys than was considered by Blue Ribbon Committee?
Yes, it's a larger scope.
Okay. And although you didn't discuss it in terms of Brown Act issues and all that, I don't recall, but when Blue Ribbon Committee took its vote on approved projects, some of them were straight-up recommendations to approve. Some of them were recommended to approve with modifications. Do you happen to recall, Supervisor Crandall, if Algy Sonic, when the vote was taken, if there was a recommendation to make some modifications to the project?
I know that Sam was going to collect those modifications to bring forward with some of the votes. A lot of the comments made seem to be more or less that we need to figure out how to spend county money on these projects, like we have cannabis funding, and I just remember those comments, really. So for me, it's a, sometimes it's an arduous process getting some of these projects to a consensus-driven approach, and so now we're voting on these, and it seems a little more competitive, whereas when we were doing things like hypo limnetic oxygenation, there were no no votes. But so, and I think that's a result of last year, some of the, the whole program not being funded. And so now they're looking at different priority options, if that makes sense. So I don't know if I answered, but I do know that there seems to be a lot of pushback when it comes to Water Resources projects being proposed, and I would say ideally by UC Davis, but that's just my opinion.
Okay. Well, I just want to highlight that AB 707, the legislation that created the Blue Ribbon Committee, does allow the committee to receive assistance and funding from public and private sources. So if there's some understanding, right or wrong, that Blue Ribbon Committee, the only thing that gets funded is through Natural Resources Agency or some other state agency, I don't think that's the way the committee is set up. But more importantly, I want to highlight that the Blue Ribbon Committee, again, is part of its fairly intensive vetting process. Not only came back with several proposed modifications of the projects that were approved, but there was some concern at the May 25th meeting, the committee discussed the need for a third-party independent review of HAB proposals approved by the committee, and Algy Sonic would have been one of those. The review is intended to provide important information on perceived efficacy of each proposal to the California Natural Resources Agency, the Governor's Office, and the Legislature as they seek funding for projects. Again, these projects were approved, so I assume the agency is going to continue to seek funding. But the committee suggested that there is a need for third-party independent review just because there's a lot of different HAB projects out there, a lot of different technologies. I agree, Algy Sonic is promising, but it's not the only technology that was reviewed or approved by the committee. And I believe the deadline is still clicking on that. So committee members are being asked to review those considerations and questions as to the need for a third-party review panel and to provide responses to the committee by June 30th of this year. So taken as a whole, I'm not oppositional to this again, but we just went through a very rigorous review process for various projects that could benefit Clear Lake as a whole. This one's more localized where the algae is running. Other projects are aimed at other parts of the lake where we have sediment blockage and things like that. But we don't have an internal review process similar to that. For example, this has not been kicked official Wildlife Committee. Maybe that would be a good starting point for something like that. And I don't know that we necessarily need to invent or reinvent the wheel to have an internal review process that duplicates what we just spent a lot of time and energy at Blue Ribbon Committee to do. So it's, the other thing is, we're basically pitting Water Resources against Water Resources. I'm glad they're supportive of this and supporting Supervisors bringing it forward, but they probably also want funding for all the other projects that they sponsored and didn't get funding for. So I kind of want to talk about those two, if only because some of those projects might be more favorable to conditions in my district. So I don't have a county-led ranking criteria to analyze this project in context with all the other projects. I don't have a county review process that can allow us just to focus on what does our department want, what does Water Resources want? Because they want a lot of things, and they got a lot of projects approved, too. I think if I were to offer a friendly amendment, it would be to like, okay, let's look at these buckets of money, but it would be to probably get it back in the box that the Blue Ribbon Committee was suggesting, maybe look at a mechanism that we can route whatever funding we approve as kind of a starting point for Blue Ribbon Committee, and maybe we can reach out, for example, Clear Lake Arm, city of Clear Lake is here, property owners up in Clear Lake Oaks Arm. After these buoys go in and the initial term goes in there, I remember the original project, there's still ongoing maintenance, and I think it was 100K or something close to that per year for the smaller set of buoys that was in the Blue Ribbon Committee. So having, having just a little more time to explore partnerships, additional funding sources that the state may have, additional partnerships that may be available locally may yield some fruit. And I know there's a need for speed, and I know we want to get algae addressed this year, but, you know, we've been at this for decades now trying to deal with this. So I think it's important to get it right. I certainly think it's important and prudent that we wait for the Blue Ribbon Committee to weigh in on whether a third-party review panel is needed to weigh various HAB proposals.
So in response to that, I met with Water Resources, and we had a couple different meetings with a couple different agencies that provide alternative feasibility projects for making the algae, or abating the algae in the area. From what I've gathered, I am not the one that said this is the thing we need. That was through the expertise of Water Resources, saying this is the best bang for our buck here. Right now, I'm waiting. Supervisor Crandall is waiting. We're all waiting for, is the Blue Ribbon Committee going to get money? And with the state of California and the financial status that it's in, I can't keep waiting for someone else. If we have the ability to do something to help change the landscape for both enjoying our lake in a pleasurable way, to attracting more visitors, to enjoy, to stay in our area, to allow our businesses, how many businesses that are on the lake can't run a business when there's algae? It's just not possible. This is an opportunity to do something rather than waiting. I mentioned in the memo that I asked Director Deleon to collect for me everything that we've done for algae, and I think he went back to. And I think he went back to 1960 or something like that. And we've spent barely $500,000 to fix it. But in the last 10 years, we've had zero problems spending $2 million for the aquatic weeds. Why? Because it works and we need to do it. I don't want to stop that. But we're not doing anything to solve the algae and waiting for a state-run Blue Ribbon Committee who has yet to provide the dollars to make this project happen. I, I can't keep waiting. And granted, today, we're not approving the project. We're approving the concept of the project, looking for the funding. Eventually, it's got to come back to us as a contract, as a fully blown-out project that's very detailed in how it's going to function. Today, it's just, yes, we like the concept. Let's move forward, see if ARPA can fund this, see if LATCF can fund it, see if other sources can fund it. If we find that, then eventually it comes back with a very detailed proposal and contract as to what that would look like. Today's not necessarily that day. It is a proposal on the table that is not the actual project that we would be signing on to. And for example, Sota Bay was brought up. If we're able to find the funds to add stuff in Sota Bay, I'm all for that. Let's make that happen. There's other areas that are dealing with this algae. If we can help, let's at least make the attempt to help. And right now, we are not making that attempt. And the people who are dealing with the burden are watching us do nothing.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, and in regards to Blue Ribbon Committee, I think a lot of the skepticism or folks with skepticism would probably see this as a, as the county doing something, you know, as opposed to trying to bring it to Blue Ribbon Committee, because I know that that was consistently stated. So I, I know that there's consistent competition between projects. I at one time thought, let's go through Blue Ribbon Committee, but now I'm seeing it kind of morph into something different. In not, I'm not downing the Blue Ribbon Committee. I just know that there's different projects and different initiatives that are competitive in nature and consistently say the same thing. Well, the county should do their, should do their own work. They're supposed to be doing this anyhow. This gives them, this does that. And not saying that I want to do it because they said, I just, I feel like it's, it's, it's something that we do as a proactive, you know, initiative. The other thing, my, my concept is more, I know that Supervisor Sabate brought up economic development, but mine is also water quality, public health. Because a lot of, a lot of people depend on the water from the lake to drink from. And sometimes there's boiling, you know, water boiling notices from public health and some of that. So that's, that's where, where I'm at with this, so.
Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah. No, I do, I do want to make sure, I know a couple of statements were made both by Supervisor Sabate and Supervisor Crandall, that the county needs to do something. So I know since I came on the board, you know, previous to the Blue Ribbon Committee and Cecilia Aguirre Curry's efforts to get it set up, you know, we are doing something. We are looking at long-term vision. So I understand you get comments like that, but also got to say, you know, we are taking steps forward. As I said, there are 14 projects, I think you said, that are being looked at, all looking at long-term funding. You want to make sure that things are happening. I clearly understand that. But we are doing something. We are looking at a long-term, because this is long-term. There is no, and even in the memo, there is no magic bullet, how you fix these things. So it's a long-term strategy. And I want to make sure we're, you know, keeping that in mind. So when those comments are made of, yeah, you know, we could look at other projects from the county standpoint, but the creation of the Blue Ribbon Committee is to look at that long-term success here of the lake and the county and to get the right folks at the table. So I just, I just want to say that. We, we are doing something. You may hear comments one way or the other, because you may not have a buoy setting in someone's backyard, but the long-term process to look at that. I think it's great to be innovative and to work with Water Resources from the county level to look at this. You know, if, if this was going to come back to the board or even today's conversation, where I'd see my support for this would be Congressman Thompson's for the annual congressional community project funding that we have, a project that's up and ready to run. But I'd also like to look at it. It's been stated here a few different times about water quality, health of the folks that are drinking water from the lake. And I think we need to look at that if we're going to support this project as that's what we'd be looking to try and do. The entire lake as a whole, with all the drinking water, there are all the purveyors that we have pulling water out of the lake, that includes the county, that pulls water out of the lake, too, here in North Lakeport. So for me, that's where my support would come from. The algae issue and other things, now, I am not, I'm not a scientist. I didn't go to school for any of this, but let's just talk from a traditional and cultural standpoint. We have one of the oldest natural lakes here in North America. We have dammed it up so it cannot naturally treat itself the way it is done for about a million years. So we're, we're reaping the rewards of that. Man trying to create, control nature. And I must tell you, it's a very, it's a lot of heat in the lake. The water is very warm. The sediment comes to the top and yes, it pushes, it's trying to clean itself out, but we've dammed it up. So it's pushing everything to the south where it's supposed to go and to leave the lake on a yearly basis or a bi-yearly basis. When you have flooding, you have other things that are occurring to clean itself out. I'm not a scientist. I'm going to be in a lot of trouble for probably saying this, you don't understand, but coming from a cultural standpoint, I, I do understand. Mother Nature has been dammed up. We're going to, we're going to see those effects from it. I don't think there's going to be an easy solution to it. But from my standpoint, we have folks living around the lake and I think we need to, my support would be for a drinking water solution for health and safety of the people around the lake. I know we have businesses, we want to support those. We're doing those with the aquatic weed abatement. But this will be something that'll be talked about long after Mok Simon sits on this diocese and looking at those long-term decisions. So in support of it, but from a drinking water quality standpoint all around the lake, instead of having it just in two areas. So that would be my thought. And the Congressman Thompson funding, I think this would be a project for that. And I think looking at those water quality issues for the drinking water would be where I could throw my support behind it. So those are my conversations there. And I, I know I've mentioned this many different times, I've been told, yeah, I, I understand why water and I understand why it's dammed up. We've got to keep water for the Central Valley there, obviously later into the year, for farming activities and other things. Also because you have folks living along the river, I, I understand that. But I just want to talk about, you know, the oldest natural lake, mother earth, the way she needs to clean herself out. She's not able to do that naturally. So anyway, go ahead.
And just a quick response. The long-term is definitely always in mind. To me, Middle Creek Restoration is part of that long-term. Again, no silver bullet, even Middle Creek Restoration won't solve it, but it will help. And that is definitely something that I bring up every time. But the fact is, how long until some of those long-term solutions will take effect? I hope that we can get to the Middle Creek Restoration complete program within 10 years. That I think is hard to reach. But within those 10 years, what can we do to help mitigate some of the burdens that people have to persist with? So I do agree that long-term is not something we should give up on, and we are working on those things.
Supervisor Green?
Recently took a business trip to Eureka and it is a side trip to the library in Arcata at Cal Poly-Humble, where the Congressional Archives of a former congressman by the name of Don Claussen keeps his papers. And he represented Lake County back in the, in the 70s. So I get the need that we got to do something. And, and back from the archives, there was a proposal then to aerate, I think the Clear Lake Oaks Arm with bubblers, they were going to bubble it. And, and there was debate even then about whether that might hurt, hurt the fishies. And then it was the Environmental Protection Agency that held all the funding keys. And they expressed concern and basically sent a rejection letter to a UC Berkeley researcher. So UC was involved even 50 years ago. And they got shot down. And lo and behold, Congressman Claussen, two weeks later, turned around and issued a big old press release about a new aeration project that was going to benefit algae in Clear Lake because he found a different bucket of money involving economic development rather than EPA money. Now, I haven't found the end of that story. I assume that project actually went forward and was installed. But I have a pretty good inkling that project isn't functional today, 50 years later, because it didn't work. So I understand the need for action, but we've been at this 50-plus years now. What are we going to do about algae in Clear Lake, including on the eastern arms? So now that we have a more methodical, scientific approach to this, including a whole big old state committee and including a whole bunch of scientists pitching the projects, and now the suggestion that we need a third-party independent review so we can do some peer review of these various proposals, it's like we're doing a lot, you know? So I like the idea of committing some funding. I'd like it better if we were committing to supporting the Blue Ribbon Committee in its approval process, which Assemblymember Aguirre Curry worked really hard to bring us. And, you know, I'm not quibbling about where these buoys go. I think, you know, I'm, I'm going to defer to the experts. The greatest need is in those arms. You know, I got no quibble that those buoys aren't necessarily going to end up on, on the west side initially at least. But I, you know, we got to match the needs that are identified by these various groups and then prioritize. One thing that was surprising about Blue Ribbon Committee was that they approved all these projects, but then they acknowledged we had a backlog from last year. And then we didn't have a prioritization. We didn't have a ranking by Blue Ribbon Committee. Which of these projects are most important? Same thing again locally with Water Resources. How do we decide this is the most important project we want to bring forward? One of the ones that they added this year and got approval for was dredging and boat ramp extension. That could go around the lake equally important to tourism, if not more so. So, you know, if I can nudge the idea, it'd be like, I don't care the bucket of money. ARPA, Congressman Thompson earmark, whatever you want to do. But let's be supportive of, of the project that was approved by BRC versus carving our own way with a bigger set and no review process for efficacy. And I think we can satisfy both worlds really well if we try to get behind what was already approved, acknowledge that there may be some modifications coming down and maybe some peer review through this third-party panel, but support that process. And I think if we can get funding identified the lion's share of it, if not all of it, then we can get moving this year. You know, I think that'd be super exciting. And I think the committee would be excited to hear that kind of local support. But I don't want to carve our own path necessarily. I want to support the path that has been laid down for us.
Yeah, and so, you know, I appreciate the, you know, relying on the Blue Ribbon Committee, but I've seen how it's more from, when I started on this committee to where we weren't really looking at no votes. We were not looking at being restricted to vote on our own projects. Or, for example, as a county supervisor, if it's a Water Resources Department proposal, that there was no issue voting for it back when UC Davis had a list of projects as long as theirs passed. And I've seen that with the Oxygen Nation Hypolymnetic Project. It was, let's hurry and get to that vote. And I know I'll probably get some beef about it, but last, last meeting was very disconcerting for me when we weren't allowed to vote on our own projects, whereas the year before we were. And then the year before, there was no no votes whatsoever. But now we're in a situation where there's no votes. And then we're being told the county is supposed to be doing these projects anyhow, and they're redundant projects, we're doing them, too. So now it's basically, for me, I feel like UC Davis does their studies. They're looking to do studies. We've always had UC Davis conducting their work in our lake. There's been complaints before about UC Davis doing that work and not giving us that information. And so I, this is why, you know, I just feel like if we do something on our own, I know that once we bring, once Blue Ribbon Committee goes forward and looks at their, what did, what did you call them Supervisor Green, their amendments? And what is it, modifications? Our projects, I feel, get scrutinized really hard, but the others are, are kind of passed through. And, you know, I, I'm not trying to be negative about Blue Ribbon Committee, but I just have seen the difference in how it's progressed, in my opinion. So, and I, I didn't think that at first and I, and I was told that, but I didn't believe it until I, this last meeting. So I have to say that.
So can you talk a little bit about the projects that have been funded through the Blue Ribbon Committee over the past couple of years?
So I want to say the docks, I know that that was a project that was put forward. The docks, I know that there was, I want to say the carp, but I don't even know if that's a county project. Yeah, that was, that was different. Do you, is anyone from Water Resources want to give?
That is more than welcome to come on up here and...
Help me with that?
I know this one, I know this one. Hi, I'm Angela de Palma Dow. I serve on the technical subcommittee for the Blue Ribbon Committee, has since it's been formed. So the current projects that Water Resources or the county has from the Blue Ribbon Committee, we have an outreach survey to determine perceptions and attitudes on water quality and impacts to the lake that is currently being in progress. We have the abatement of the structures, the dilapidated structures along the lake. That is, also, we had county funds for that. The cannabis tax revenue funds went to match that. And then Blue Ribbon Committee supported that project with that match in mind. We also have some stormwater funding. So this is really interesting. We got awarded a $1.6 million stormwater planning implementation project. That was in 2021. And actually, we're still waiting for half of those funds to come in. So we, we haven't received those yet. But the other half are for the illicit discharge detection, which is spill response. There's spills out in the lake and trash cleanup. So there was a trash cleanup this weekend at La Cern. And all that was funded by the Blue Ribbon Committee funds. And we also have the lake sampling. So the monthly sampling that goes on in Clear Lake, you know, that sampling traditionally was conducted by DWR since 1960s. And they stopped all of a sudden in 2020. And, and so we wanted to pick that up so we could keep collecting that data because it's important for us to notice changes in the lake over time. And we're only able to do that with that information. So the Blue Ribbon Committee was able to provide funding for that stopgap for that project. We asked for that funding again and they're, don't really know if they want to keep funding that project. We need to find additional funding to sustain that program also. I think that's about it for those projects. But we've gotten around $2 million from Blue Ribbon Committee for various projects. We recently were approved some primrose removal, tulip planting funds for about 156,000. And we also got approved for natural shoreline stewards program and then also a lake management plan program and dredging of the mouths and the boat ramp, stream mouths and the boat ramps. Those were all approved projects that don't have funding yet allocated, but it is the goal of Blue Ribbon Committee to help find us funding for that or put them in as line items in the governor's budget whenever there's money available in that budget. I think that's about it. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, that helps, yeah. And, and just to kind of give more emphasis as to the situation with voting and it, the, the initiative that are, initiatives that are brought forward, it tends to have a lot more scrutiny on the county. And I've said this before, for our Water Resources projects. And now that we're having these, you know, different, I guess you could say priorities, it, it seems as if the collective group of the Blue Ribbon Committee is kind of like saying, well, the county has, you know, they have their own department. They should be doing these own things. And so we're being a little more scrutinized, if that makes sense. And so when it comes to prioritization and the budget not getting passed last year and projects being emphasized. And so, so I, you know, not to beat a dead horse, but I'm just like, from here forward, now that we're prioritizing, it, it's looking like some of our projects are going to be put lower on the totem pole because these other proposals are looking to have their projects more preferred, if that makes any sense.
Okay. Okay, so I'll open it up to the public. Do we have anybody in the chambers that wishes to speak on this? Come on up.
Joan Mas. I was at LEM in 1988 when the Superfund site came to Clear Lake. I want to know why we haven't talked about the Superfund. Has that been canceled? I haven't heard that it was canceled. And I think that...
That's a different topic?
No. It's, the Superfund site is concerning methylmercury, cyanobacteria, algae.
Joan, there actually was, there was a, they gave a presentation, I want to say about a month ago, about the progress and how it's moving forward. So I...
Well, I don't think that you can make any decisions without talking to everybody involved. Okay? That includes the federal EPA. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi again. Okay, Angela de Palma Dow from Lake County Water Resources. Just a clarification for the technology, because I've had questions about this. Just a clarification for the technology, because I've had questions about this before. So the buoys will target cyanobacteria and cyanobacteria have little cells or mechanisms in them that create buoyancy. And so that's what the Sonic, that's what is actually targeting, is the buoyancy, the little cells with air inside the cyanobacteria, as opposed to algae or green algae, which is phytoplankton, which is fish food. So we just want to clarify that we're not targeting to get rid of fish food, phytoplankton, it's targeting to get rid of cyanobacteria. And a lot of the strategic areas where those buoys are placed in your map was when you look at the cyanotoxin monitoring, particularly that Big Valley Ranteria has been doing, every year those areas have repeated signages for danger. And I don't know if Sarah Ryan was invited today, but I know her data, she has put that together for where all the danger levels or warning levels, which are the highest trigger levels based on cyanotoxins per the State Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment. And those areas repeatedly get those concentration triggers, as opposed to the upper arm, which does sometimes get those triggers, but it's not as much, it's not as repeated. So there is overlap between where those buoys are going to be placed and actual data from the cyanotoxin monitoring. And so that might be some important information that could be requested from Big Valley that does that monitoring to kind of make sure those buoys are going in the right place to where those results from the cyanotoxin monitoring is actually occurring. Just a point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did you have a question?
Quick question, as long as you're here, and it could be for you or William. Since I don't have a breakdown, can you clarify, I surmise that the proposal before us today has grown in scope from what Blue Ribbon Committee approved. Is there a real quick breakdown? Is it 20 buoys versus 14 or, you know, I assume that we have problem spots so that either what's before us today or the lesser project approved by BRC would still be helpful. So can you just help us compare and contrast what's before us today and what was previously approved?
I think it's complementary projects. Part of the placement suggested for the Blue Ribbon Committee project was because we were explicitly told not to have buoys placed in certain areas because there was going to be research going on and they didn't want to mess up the research. I'm sorry if I'm being honest and blunt, but what we really care about is improving the lake for the residents here. And if there can be research that can go on coincidentally with that, that would be the goal. But the plan that was proposed to the Blue Ribbon Committee with the buoys was structured that way because we were told it wouldn't get approved otherwise because it would interfere with other areas where's ongoing research.
Who's research?
UC Davis.
UC Davis, also lower arm, there was a project proposed for the AECOM, which is the harvesting, the algae harvesting. So, which hasn't been, it was approved, but hasn't been funded yet. So, does that answer your question, Supervisor Green?
Thank you.
Chair, Board members, thank you for the discussion. This is, I'm Alan Flora, City Manager, City of Clear Lake. You know, I think this is, this discussion's really a long time coming. I mean, I know there was a lot of efforts and discussion about this a number of years ago when I was with the county, but, you know, we just haven't made as much progress on sort of these long-term solutions as would be ideal. You know, I was, I think, I'm pleased with what the Blue Ribbon Committee has done in the sense that there's been a lot of research effort and a lot of, I think, somewhat feasible solutions that have come out of this. And, you know, I don't regularly attend those meetings, but because of what Angela was saying, a lot of the impacts being in the lower arm and really impacting Clear Lake, whenever folks want to talk about doing something on Clear Lake related to harmful algae blooms, they usually come and talk to us because, you know, we're the most impacted area generally. Austin Beach is the place, every year, that is generally the first one that we have to put up a danger sign because of the testing. So, but, so I'm aware of kind of three proposed technologies related to harmful algae blooms that came out of the Blue Ribbon Committee. There could be more that I'm not aware of. One was sort of the aeration system in kind of like the Clear Lake Keys area. The city installed along Austin Beach this year, a similar type of technology to try and see if we can create a swimmable area for the community throughout the year. And so we're hoping that through testing and whatnot, that we'll be able to see how effective this is. But of course, that only works in a very contained area and the feasibility of doing a system like that, that would impact the entire lake, is very difficult to put together. The other project, of course, is LG Sonic Technology, which because it's somewhat modular, you know, has a lot of attractiveness to it. The other one being the AECOM project, which was proposed to be tested at Red Bud Park in Clear Lake. And so it's essentially a, sort of a large trailer setup that they come in, they stick a hose in the lake, they pull water out, they separate the algae out of it or the cyanobacteria, and then they put the clean water back in the lake. It's a technology that's been used a lot in Florida. A lot of this technology, I think LG Sonic as well, has been tested in Florida. They have a lot of problems down there. So this isn't really a new thing, it just hasn't been experienced here yet. But the problem with AECOM is, if I could just have a-
Yeah, so I have a question for you with-
Okay.
Time is up. Is this a project that the city would partner with the county on?
Well, I'd love to be able to put some money forward for this. I actually talked to LG Sonic after being exposed to the technology about doing a small thing and we can't afford to put a million and a half dollars towards this. But one of the gentlemen that you'll hear from has a hotel on the lake that, you know, he has to cancel reservations when the blooms are bad. And so my hope was maybe we try a little project in that type of area there that might help and see how it works for a year and then maybe it could be expanded later. And maybe LG Sonic or William or someone wanted to speak to this, but they are not optimistic about a very small-scale thing like that being effective. And they think that we need to do something larger to control the whole arm. And so that's the problem for us getting involved. And, you know, I don't want to be too direct, but, you know, the city of Lakeport isn't putting any money in the weed mitigation project, which benefits this side of the lake. And, you know, it's been pretty simple to get that done over the years. And so my hope would be that we could cut through some of the red tape, identify some funding and try this out, so.
So that's a yes, possibly?
Possibly.
Possibly, okay.
Do the cities receive ARPA as well and whatnot, this type of funding?
Do you receive ARPA funds? Are they already spent?
Yes, those are committed for a few infrastructure projects at this time, yeah. But we did receive ARPA funds, about $3 million.
Thanks.
But if we did an earmark request, then it could be a collaborative request with the county and both cities.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with that. The only thing I don't like about it is timing, you know? I was very optimistic probably eight months ago in the conversation with the Blue Ribbon Committee about, you know, they really like some of these projects, they wanted to try out the AECOM project, see how that worked. But, you know, that's 1.3 million for a three-month pilot project, extremely expensive. And, you know, just with the state budget, they pulled everything back. And so here we are, another year, and, you know, our folks aren't going to want to use our parks and our restaurants and hotels are going to be impacted. I mean, you know, so all of us are hopeful that this year isn't going to be as bad because of the water level, but I don't know if any of you have been keeping an eye on the state water board's harmful algae bloom satellite technology that's available now. I just became aware of it recently, I don't know how long it's been out there, but in the last 10 days, there has been an enormous change in the lake as far as the amount of what they analyze for harmful algae blooms in Clear Lake. And so, you know, I'm very concerned that, you know, we're going to have a big problem that's going to impact our economy again, so.
Okay, thank you.
Nancy Ruzika, I'm a resident of North Lakeport. I'm hearing that these buoys are going to last 15 years. If at your home you have a swimming pool or you're affiliated with a business, does your pool sweep last 15 years? What about a five-year project? And what about being able to move them? I have a hard time that it has to be anchored in one position for 15 years. Am I following correctly? I'm getting a little old and don't follow it as well as I used to. But I'm for anything that's going to improve our tourism and our quality of life and our water quality for drinking purposes. But 15 years seems kind of far-fetched, too long a commitment as a taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may clarify?
Sure.
The payment for the devices are upfront. It's not a $1.5 million per year for the equipment. If we do data gathering, then there would be an annual fee to ensure that we continuously get the wireless connection for the devices. But the devices themselves are stated to last, kind of like solar panels, you have a 25-year potential for them to last, this one has a 15-year potential to last. It's not that we're getting into a contract that for 15 years, we're going to be paying them for these devices.
Good morning. I'm Keith A. Hart, Golden State Water Company, Operations Superintendent in Clear Lake. I'm also an alternate to Scott Harder on the Blue Ribbon Committee. So I've heard all of these technologies, all the presentations, there's a number of them out there. I think bang for the buck, this is a good approach. And as it was already stated, they're modular, you can move them, you can attach more to the master buoys. I think the approach would be good until we learn how to control the phosphorus and nitrate in the lake. It's, we all, we all thought it was coming from runoff. And a certain amount of it is, but a lot of it's come from the lake bed as well. So until we learn how to control nature, this is a method to do that in a smaller place. I mean, it's naturally occurring, it's there. So until, that's, we're trying to control that and I think this is a way to do it until something else happens. I also think that there's an opportunity for partnerships with other water companies around the lake, other resorts, et cetera, to employ this technology as well. We, at Golden State Water Company, my boss, myself, our water quality engineer, sat through a presentation from LG as well, on our own, to look at that technology. So if the four slave buoys can report to one master buoy. So there's an opportunity for us to put a slave buoy and have, you know, someone else have a smaller cost and have a slave talk to it. So I support the, this technology and at least looking for the funding to move forward.
Thank you.
I have a handout that I'd like to go to the board. All right, I understand I have three minutes.
Yes, can you state your name, please?
Yes, okay. I'm Bob Vanderwood. I'm General Manager of Clear Lake Cottage and Marina, part of Cathedral Hill Associates. We own two large double trees, Seattle, Dallas, Holiday Inn, each of these has like 200 to, you know, 290 rooms in them. We're a small operation, had the intent of expanding here at the lake, but we are having financial revenue problems. I have a couple of pictures, I'm personalizing this in a couple of ways, myself and then the, and my employees and the impact on the guests and our business. I understand there's a camera showing, but these are pictures, we have a boating operation, pontoon boats, wave runners, et cetera. I go out and check the lake, see what's going on. My eyes started stinging, this was a couple of years ago, and I golf, sometimes my eyes sting. I knew this was totally different than what I'd seen before. After going to Santa Rosa and getting shots, this is the impact of the cyanobacteria, without touching it, it was driving past it, observing, this is my face the third day. This has happened three to four times. I was kind of the poster boy, working with Dr. Pace, and there's some funding going to, trying to get funding from the state to look into cyanobacteria. I don't know where it ended up. This is my resort, this is last year. This is our boating operation. We can't even get the boats, much less the water level, the toxins. We've had fans, we put fans in the water, $500, $700 a fan, we rotate them around, pushing the water on our property. Well, that's a year or so ago and we're talking, someone recently mentioned, oh, look at what's going on now. Well, this is the view from one of my lakefront cottages, looks fairly pristine until you take a little closer look. So the algae is already appearing this year. So what's the effects? I had blisters on my eyeballs, swollen face, itching, respiratory problems, headaches. My employees as well, my guests. We've had guests yell at us, we've had guests leave, we've lost thousands and thousands, if not tens of thousands, if you look at the people who haven't booked with us. We've had people got diarrhea, other things, we've had to give a lot of money back, we've lost, our revenues are way down in the last several years to the tune $100,000 plus. So what are, what are we doing? We tried the fans, we, we had people talk about how they're promoting the lake. We're being very careful for not getting sued. So I have links on my website to the POMO data.
So-
I have 251 on mine, but we have links on our website.
I'll give you five more things.
We have handouts in our cottages, people call, I tell them the truth. And now my company is really concerned about our expansion we were going to do here.
Okay, thank you so much for your time. Do we have anyone else in the chambers? Okay, we have a couple of hands up in the Zoom room. First, we have Betsy Khan, if you want to state your name, you know, I have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Board. Betsy Khan, Lake County resident. I have been involved in the Clean Water Program in the County of Lake since 2000, preceding the water quality orders from the Central Valley Water Quality Control Board and the findings of Tetra Tech and so forth. The state of California has studied this lake since the 1950s. All of the history and all the scientific reports that you have funded already are present on the new website for the Department of Water Resources, which is just beautiful. Everything can be accessed by the public. But there's no question that this subject affects everything in the county. It affects health and safety, the overall economy, the tourism, your compliance with NPDES, federal EPA water quality orders. And I have been paying attention to what the Blue Ribbon Committee has been doing. The main reason why these approved projects have not been funded is simply because of the state budget and they were not able to get those projects into the, may revise by the governor. Anything that you can do, and I think that you should really listen to your other people that talk to you, especially Mr. A. Hart and Mr. Vanderwood. This is an ongoing plague on our houses and so I would really encourage you to take a leap of faith and give this a chance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Frank Kostner.
Hi, this is, my name is Frank Kostner. I'm the General Manager of Conocai County Water District in the city of Clear Lake. And we are severely impacted by the algae blooms. In fact, we've, we've probably spent, you know, over $100,000 over the past two years in additional chemical costs over time and everything else to try to treat the algae in the lake. The algae is so bad that, in fact, I can smell it from my house and I live about three miles from the lakeshore and can smell it from my house. You know, there's been a lot of studies and a lot of proposals over the past 20 years that I've been a part of. And it seems to me like there's, there's lots of money for studies and there, we study it and we study it and we gather all this data, but we don't seem to actually do anything to actually physically treat the water. And so I am, I am really encouraging you to actually fund a project that we can actually get some results from. get some results from. And, you know, just a triage of patient, you know, you need to treat the most, the critical areas, you know, you don't want to wait until you can treat the whole person. You really, you know, if you have a, you know, if you have a wound or whatever, you know, you need to treat the wound. And the lake is hurting, there's areas that we can focus on, and then maybe we can use that data to, you know, the results, some actual results, to use around the lake. But I would really encourage, however, whatever means necessary, whatever means that we have available, is that we can actually do something, some actual physical action to help treat the water. You know, we did water, we do water sanitary surveys, and we come up with proposals, and it doesn't seem like they go anywhere. So it would be really encouraging to me as a water manager for public safety and public health. This is a public health issue, you know, it's not just aesthetics, it's not just how it looks. It actually, it's very harmful, it's a water quality issue, and that we should take our public health, safety. You know, over the, I've been in the business for 34 years, and I've just seen the lake get worse and worse and worse. And, and the chemical costs, labor costs, and the water treatment issues continue. You know, we have some of the most sophisticated and expensive water treatment plants in the state, and we also have some of the most disadvantaged communities in the state. And so it's really hard to ask for these, for our customers to pay for the extra expense because the lake is so bad and because the algae blooms are unabated.
Okay, we are at three minutes now.
Thank you for your time. I really appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. We have any other public comment? I'm not seeing any new hands up in Zoom, and anyone else in the chambers, last chance. Okay, then we'll close public input and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Spotier.
Appreciate all the comments that were made and the conversation here at the dais as well. Again, this is simply a proposal, it's not a final project. I'm willing to be flexible to make sure that we maximize what can be done to help the most amount of people. I want to be utilitarian about this. The greatest happiness for the greatest number of people, or else if we're only helping a few, this is not worth it. And I don't mind reviewing the project scope, reviewing the exact placement, but I still would like to move forward in ensuring that we are looking at the data as to what is the most impacted areas, where are our water purveyors, and so on and so forth, and see if there's funding available to us, and then come back with the final project.
So given that we're in June, is it even feasible, if everything moved quickly, to have this up for this season?
I am past my disappointment that I wasn't able to bring this to you guys in January. This was something that we started back in August, I think, the conversation, when we were knee deep in the drought and elbow deep in algae, that I did not want to see that happen again without taking some actions. So my assumption is, I, number one, I don't think it's possible to get everything installed and see its impact. And I also don't want to install it when it's already turned and we're going to say, oh, we failed, because we're not seeing the actual cleaning of the lake with this equipment. I want to make sure it's installed before the lake turns. We know the lake is turning. I hate to see it turn without us taking action, but I also don't want to rush it and put us in a situation where it looks like we just spent $1.5 million and getting nothing out of it. I want to make sure we do it right, but ensuring we have the funding. Worst case scenario, we get a plan and we wait for the next earmarks. I hope that's not the avenue we have to take, but that's why I put all the options available to us, rather than trying to ramrod it through on one specific pathway. And I don't know if Supervisor Crandall has any more to add to that.
No, I don't.
Well, I would like to see it come back, and I would like to see if we can maybe have a partnership with the city of Clear Lake, or if there's any other partners I would like to collaborate on this. I'm not sure yet which funding is best, but there are several options. And I would like it to be continued to work on and brought back, and hopefully for next season. It just doesn't seem like it'll be feasible for this season. And did you have something to add, Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah, just thinking about it. Michael, I know you've talked quite a bit about the project that was approved by the Blue Ribbon Committee, and you said this one is a little bit larger. Do you, can anyone in the room talk about what size that project was, and the starting process, and where we're at now, so?
Angela?
Is Will, it was Will's project.
Oh.
Is Mr. Fox still on?
Yeah.
Or LG Sonic?
Because I thought that was a good point made by Michael, that we support the project, and, you know, as it comes back, maybe that's the project we say, all right, hey, you don't have the funding, but the county can step up and, you know, do that initial one that was submitted. I know, not happy with it, I clearly understand that needs to be in a bigger case, but, you know, maybe we can start there. Also, a point was made, too, by the last public speaker, you know, triage and a patient, starting where it's coming from. And I know, just for being here, looking, you know, multiple conversations with different scientists from UC Davis, former Jim Steele, sitting down and talking about it. We know that, you know, it doesn't all start on the North Side, but a lot of the North stuff is pushed down by the winds, and it moves, and it collects at the South End on Clear Lake and, you know, in the Keys and everything from there. So really making sure we're looking at that, of treating it from, you know, where it's coming from and being pushed to, because, yeah, it's great to treat where it's gathering, but as you said, as you try and treat an illness, you want to get ahead of it, you know, being proactive. So that's why I like the entire all-around-the-lake conversation as the Blue Ribbon continues to have. So I did say, you know, I think this is a project that's been brought to us that I could support. Like I said, I think this would be a great one for Congressman Thompson's funding. The board decides different, you know, action definitely is needed. We know stuff is happening, but it all kind of is, oh, our technology is going to work. Well, until we do the project, we won't know it's going to work, just as Michael Green said, Supervisor Green said, some stuff was done back in the 50s. I hadn't heard about any of that, so, just coming up. So do have support for the overall concept, where the funding comes from, you know, like see, but ultimately partnerships with both cities, I think needs to be continued conversation as we're doing this, because we all either, you know, we all benefit from the lake and the health of the lake. It is the most important asset we have here, besides our constituents. So continuing along the process, I'd like to see it come back to in some iteration. And it may just be the Blue Ribbon Committee project, so those are my thoughts.
As a request, there's an outline of possible avenues. I'd still love to see this go to the ARPA, to see what they say, love to see it go through the process. Is it possible to use LACTF? And again, the project scope in itself, that can be a different conversation, rather than the funding conversation, where Water Resources can continue to speak with Blue Zone, Blue Zones, too many blues, Blue Ribbon Committee, and figuring out what is the best scope for the project in order to marry the project with the funding availability.
So I'd agree with the ARPA funding, because I think that's a conversation we could have with both, everybody got some ARPA funding. So looking at those long-term solutions, I would agree with that ARPA conversation, going back to the committee. I know we're going to have budget conversations, and we've got some grants, some other things, money has been reallocated back that we had set aside. So I think, yeah, there are some opportunities there. So I would agree with the ARPA committee looking at this, again, for sure.
So.
In conversation with the cities also.
Right, okay, so ARPA committee and then direct staff to continue to work on the plan.
Yeah.
Okay, and then conversations with both cities, after the ARPA committee talks about it, or? I guess we can get to that. Supervisor Green?
Absolutely ARPA, absolutely LACTF. I do want to, you know, as we're sending them out, I would like us to stay in the four corners of the approved Blue Ribbon Committee project. If only because it's smaller, it's not going to ruffle any feathers of other projects still out there that could be impacted by the larger scale project. And I also think keeping a smaller project, a smaller ask initially, maybe we can't do the full deployment this year. But I still hold out some slim hope that a phased implementation of this project could be done if we figure out the funding quickly. So if we can bootstrap some local contribution and get some pilot deployment going, it is important, I think, to get the city involved, but even more important to get the state involved. And if we're going to have any luck getting any type of money out of the state, following the path of the Blue Ribbon Committee versus going our own, I think it's probably more suited to get that state buy-in.
Yeah, my only concern with staying, as you said, within the four corners of the Blue Ribbon Committee is that we've heard that there's areas that want to be designated for research, and those are our vulnerable people that live there. And so I wouldn't want them excluded just because of research that's been ongoing. And so I would really encourage our staff to bring back a report on the difference between those projects and how we can better support the health and safety of our residents. Supervisor.
Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize that, I made that, I know we talked about how the initiative for AB 707 Blue Ribbon Committee was put in place for the health of the lake. I had to mention that again last meeting, because to me, it started feeling like it's more of a vibe for project funding, rather than the health of.
For research?
Yeah, well, either or, you know, and so, because, you know, and I already stated the reasons before, so, you know, and then it's been said also that short-term projects for research are funded with just as expensive. I know that and feel that if we were to bring something like this to them, it would be heavily scrutinized, and I'm not sure how it's going to work out with the other project with LG Sonic, but once it moves forward, it'll move forward. But I just, I had to state that because I know it was mentioned about, you know, AB 707. I do feel the intent there. I just see, for me, this is what I'm gathering at these meetings. So it's not to take it away from anything anyone's saying, I respect what we're talking about and the stances, and I do agree with the consensus of the board, so.
And just my final thing, I did look for grant funding, we worked on that. We were hoping to utilize the drought relief funds to say that our water purveyors were struggling and needed help. We got denied for that, that wasn't available for us. So we've tried other options to find funding throughout the course of the conversations that we've had. And while I don't, I don't want to prohibit a conversation with the cities, I just want to remind everybody that whether you're in a city or unincorporated, we're all paying into the watershed protection district, no matter where your property is, because the lake is the jurisdiction of the county to handle. So again, I don't mind having those conversations, but I just want to make sure and make that statement.
And it is something that we could discuss at the RRA, because we do have, our membership there is inclusive of both cities and water purveyors, and this is a safety issue. And maybe there is some way that the RRA could be supportive in other ways that we haven't maybe figured out at this moment.
Yep.
Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah, I do want, you know, obviously Congressman Thompson's funding, I've said that too, if we could, you know, take it through the process, you know, of funding opportunities, the ARPA funding, you know, definitely is coming to the top for me as we had the longer conversation today, because I don't want to forget, we've got a 10-year road plan, which we know that we have a 200, I'll say it wrong, probably $224 million deficit. So we want to be strategic with those opportunities when we have those. So, yeah, I think moving towards the ARPA conversation for funding, most likely is, you know, where I fully support something like this. So, Scott, you're sitting here in the room, we all know that's a heavy lift for the road. So sorry to get off on that, it's all economic development, but that one, I'm really stuck on how we, how we do that. That's a lot more than 1.5 million, so obviously, thank you.
Scott DeLeon, Public Works and Water Resources, and I appreciate their recognition and the comment. And I, I just, I wasn't going to say anything, but I think I'd need to, yes, every property in Lake County and in the incorporated cities contribute to the watershed protection district, and our funding annually from those tax contributions is about $700,000 a year. So, and that goes to the operation of the entire watershed protection district. So I can, I can almost feel the folks watching this saying, well, you know, I'm already paying into this program, I'm paying into the watershed protection district, where's my money going? Well, hopefully that kind of puts things in perspective. It's.
It's not enough.
It's not half of this, this project's proposal, so. And that, and that goes towards the operation of the entire district. So just, just a general comment to give some perspective of scope. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, and I just want to support Supervisor Crandall. I did find some of the Blue Ribbon Committee process interesting, but mildly. But I also think we need to work, not within the four corners, but support that process and also figure out those issues. The conflict of interest thing was interesting, the idea of a third-party peer review panel interesting, but I think we need to grow that capacity within the committee. So again, they never rank these things, and it's interesting that the legislation and the charter and all that, you know, what is the health of a lake? Well, it depends on who you're asking. Are we talking about Clear Lake Hitch? We haven't heard one word about that, and how beneficial this project is or is not. And when we have those discussions, well, like, all these projects benefit the lake generally, but then we make them, one thing the committee added is like, well, tell us how this is going to benefit Lake County's economy. And it's like, and they're all making stuff up as they go, because it's very hard to quantify. In this project, at least, we have a much easier task quantifying what some of the economic impacts might be, and that is core to the central legislation. But the larger issue of what's a healthy lake look like, and how do we rank these projects based on actual environmental benefit versus economic benefit? I think that's something that the original legislation didn't necessarily fully get done. I think the committee can move toward understanding that better. I think we can move toward understanding that better, too. I clearly support this idea because it is going to be beneficial on multiple fronts, including economic. Is it going to benefit the hitch recovery that we're all about right now? No, stream dredging is probably going to be much more cost-effective and much more hitch beneficial in that lens. So I always want to have a broad lens as we're talking to this. I do appreciate the Blue Ribbon Committee was a bit of a lift, but they're following the original charter and the original legislation that probably focused more on economic stuff than other things, so.
Okay, so we've got direction to staff, and we've got direction to the ARPA committee.
One last comment.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall, our point is on the Blue Ribbon Committee, reaching out to C. Yagar Curry. If you have concerns or conversations, I just, I would recommend that.
Yeah.
You know, to reach out to the author. You know, she's always open, always available for conversation, supportive of Lake County, even with the, you know, the initiation of this Blue Ribbon Committee, so, Blue Ribbon Committee, so I just put that suggestion out there, to reach out to our representative. Very open to having conversations here about Lake County's future.
And I'll just, yeah, I will do that.
Talking to the committee member.
No, you're right, it will help. I just, like, you know, last year, when we talked about the hypolimnetic oxygenation project, there was concern from most of the committee members that were saying, oh, we, are we prioritizing? Because we want to make sure, I mean, because we're peer reviewing, and the chair during the time said, no, there's no, no, there isn't a situation like that. We, you know, we plan to put these on the list, and when the funding comes available, well, there's no limit. There's no, there's none of that. And so they were looking at doing that last year, and then now, here we are. You see what I'm saying? There's a little bit of a, you know, contradictory, you know, thing, double standard type of thing going, and I'm not upset, or I'm just a little miffed that it's, you know, at one time, it was stated that this wasn't the case, and now here we are. And so, so, I mean, I think we'll get to a better path, and I don't want to discourage working with the Blue Ribbon Committee, and I will reach out to our Assemblywoman, so, yeah.
If I can be clear on the direction, first step is sending it to ARPA, seeing what's going on. If it's denied there, we look at possibly LACTF and that conversation of how those funds will be utilized, because we have not had that conversation about LACTF yet. And then, at the very worst-case scenario, while staff continues to develop the project, it's a project that may be one of the projects we submit to our congressional community projects in the long run.
Yeah, but, I mean, we could get partial funding from ARPA.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, I think that's the first step of a conversation.
I just wanted to.
We'll start with ARPA.
Can we do concurrent?
You're for, could you do a double referral? I mean, ARPA and LACTF? I mean, again, need for speed, maybe we can't deploy anything this year, but.
I think we'll start with ARPA, because that committee is put together. We haven't talked about the.
Yeah, and I think one at a time is perfectly fine. Yeah, and I think one at a time is perfectly fine.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So let's take a five-minute break.